We have a question on the client, so we're just thinking of a way maybe to handle that.
Tammy, are you ready?
Ready.
I'm not the chairperson.
Becky, are you ready?
Yep.
We'll talk it through together. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 a.m. On Monday, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five, I will call the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Couple of announcements. The Lincoln County Board of Commissioners reserves the right to interclose session at any time as necessary to discuss the agenda item currently before the board. The Lincoln County Board of Commissioners also reserves the right to take agenda items out of order for the convenience of the parties involved. We do follow the Open Meeting Act with amendments, which is posted at the entrance to our room. At nine fifteen, we will recess as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also following the Open Meeting Act with amendments. Our first agenda item is to open with prayer. Commissioner Woodruff, if you would lead us today, please.
Yes, sir. Please join me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and the many opportunities that are available to us. Thank you for the many blessings we enjoy, the many freedoms that are ours. Look after those less fortunate than ourselves, that they may seek guidance from you and comfort. Watch over and protect the many men and women that are in the military, home and abroad, law enforcement, first responders, and the everyday heroes that make this a safe place for us to live and to prosper. Look after this group as we meet today, that we may make decisions that are favorable in your eye and are to the best interest of those that we serve. These things we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Good morning, Todd.
Good morning, everybody.
Good. Agenda item two is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioner meeting held last week on Monday, October sixth, two thousand and twenty five.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes regarding the Commissioners meeting held on October the twentieth, or October sixth, two thousand and twenty five. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye. We will now consider claims and treasurers receipts.
Make a motion that we approve the claims and treasurers receipts as presented. The caveat that we always have the ability to pull any claims that we find questionable or to have further discussion on.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye. We will now receive an order filed the fee report submitted by the clerk of the district court, the county clerk, the county sheriff, and the register of deeds.
Chair, I would move that we receive an order filed the fee report submitted by the clerk of the district court in the amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred and three dollars, fifty six cents. The county clerk in the amount of one thousand, fifty five dollars. And the Lincoln County Sheriff in the amount of nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty three dollars and forty six cents. And the register of deeds in the amount of thirty three thousand, three hundred and sixty two dollars, twenty three cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Roll call, please.
Did you include the fifty, seventy, eleven, seventy? Or is that a, is that part of the other?
Uh, yeah, you're right. There's one more that goes with the sheriff. I just now saw.
I don't think it's added into the, it's a separate one for.
Oh, I see. It wasn't attached?
Fifty, seventy, eleven, seventy.
It wasn't included there, so I would modify my motion to include a fee from the sheriff's office of five thousand, seven hundred and eleven, seventy cents in addition to the nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty three dollars and forty six cents.
Still second.
Good catch.
Yes, very good catch. We have an amended motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Tammy, would you do me a favor, please, on behalf of the board and let, contact the clerk of the district court. They need to upgrade their reports from a three-member board. I know it's been this way for quite some time, but there's only the chairman and two other places, so just, just a note if you would, please. Thank you.
Good morning, Tyler.
Becky, you know, that is through the extension, you know. So I guess, it seems funny that, that does, you know, directly to or for that, but as long as there's a trail, I guess. I don't have any problem with that.
I suppose she actually ate, so she didn't have, she, she probably doesn't have a card. She don't have a county card, but.
No, but I mean, wouldn't she?
Yeah, so I think she used her personal card.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay.
Well, we did that all the time. Yeah, they have one card on them. There's some.
Gotcha.
Uh, yeah.
I've got to get those reimbursals for those clean rags and old gloves.
Two dollars and fifty cents.
I always think that's part of the cost of doing business for.
I have another task.
Yeah, plumber goes do his work.
He's charging them.
I don't care if the brakes are clean. I'm dirty riding on my pipe. I don't give a shit.
Maybe Tyler knows Camelot, the transport.
You know what I mean?
One-way transport from North Platte to Mission.
I guess I just won't face that picky.
For Ireland, yeah.
It's like almost seven hundred dollars.
But it, I don't know, it'd be nice to find out what the squealing, squeaking noise was, or to check the squealing noise down here. Yeah, still squealing, or if we figure out what that was, I wonder.
That's what I thought initially, but that's given, right?
Mikaela? Oh, sorry. Please.
Sorry, did I interrupt?
No, I interrupted. I'm sorry. Please continue.
Seems like a lot. I have a note to ask.
So it'd be down as I. Did you have mileage down that?
No, it's one way south heating system.
I was gonna ask that you check on this next one, Mikaela Booker.
Okay.
See if we found out what the squealing noise was and what the fix was.
Aye.
Thank you.
This one?
Yeah.
Where you can delegate that to fellow committee member or just the, the committee would check into it. How's that?
It is nine fifteen. I think I might have just passed my agenda on to you. Thank you. I need that. It is nine fifteen. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization following the Open Meeting Act with amendments. Our first order of business as the Board of Equalization is to approve the meeting minutes from last Monday's October sixth, two thousand and twenty five meeting.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held October sixth, two thousand and twenty five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye. Our next item is certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. County Assessor Julie Stinger indicates that we have none today. Thank you, Julie. Next, we have adoption of resolution number two thousand and twenty five dash twenty seven, setting the two thousand and twenty five tax levies for all political subdivisions headquartered in Lincoln County. Becky, would you like to just give us a brief description of this?
All the political subdivisions on there have to submit a budget to my office as well, which they did. Um, these are the tax levies that resulted from those amounts requested with the current valuation. So I did the levies, a couple of people in my off, office that will check them, but I will also send them out to the political subdivisions and tell them to make sure they are correct, that they have the same thing, before it goes to the treasurer and assessor for their tax statements.
Very good. Thank you.
We have till November fifth to correct them if there's anything that's wrong.
Chair, I would make a motion that we adopt resolution number twenty five dash twenty seven, setting the two thousand and twenty five tax levies for all political subdivisions headquartered in Lincoln County.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If you have all had time to review the document. Is there any discussion?
One request that I would have, and I know it's not part of anything that would be official, is if we could get some kind of a graphic to kind of show a little bit easier on the, like a pie chart. I know we've done it in the past. It doesn't have to be done, obviously, this year, but moving forward.
Are you talking about, because that was just for tax district one, that was still platt, which we still have, but I, there's, you know, kind of tax districts, so. The city are platt.
Yeah.
I know a new, I, I was gonna say, I know a newspaper reporter that does excellent pie charts for us. I actually have last year's that you did saved, so.
Then if it's going to be in the press, disregard it.
We thank you, we thank you for that, Todd. It's.
It may not be exactly tomorrow, but our tax, our last tax bracket piece is raining for Thursday, so.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Uh, did you find out any particular?
I did. That is a juvenile offender.
Juvenile. Juvenile offender to detention. So it's in a special brand, I think.
Joe, what was your question on this Chad's plumbing?
Wonder what the squeak was.
Yeah, made a squeaking noise. It cost $91.03 in three trips. We didn't save to find out what the squeaking noise was or get it corrected. If not, something still we need to do, or that's all. Investigated it.
Investigated.
Charged him for his clean rags and gloves. I was telling Ken, I just, I was hoping he was gonna use his old rags. He used these for a bit. I know he talked.
I will take a note. It is nine twenty. We will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Our next agenda item is at nine thirty.
Pretty consist, pretty consistent on our electrical, if these are the green dryer. Yeah, it's almost identical much to the line.
Okay.
Tammy, just so you're aware, it is seventy six degrees in here.
It's plenty warm. It's even warm for me.
Sure wish the guys could, that's what happens.
It was set on seventy three when it's three degrees today. I just.
I know, all the thermostats are bad. They don't work.
Another note. How many times have I wrote, written that one down? I guess I didn't look. It might be seven feet instead of four. Oh, yes.
Thank you.
No, that sort of.
No, I know, but yeah, that.
Yes. Do, would you prefer me to be hot? Because when I get hot, I get.
I shouldn't, I, no. The vermicash. Ken and I just opened the window and the system's running out of money, but.
Circu- that was, that's your thing?
I don't know. I have a note to ask before. I was not aware of any issues.
Which, by the way, progress on what we're doing with that.
It's fully resolved.
I know.
With the city, the city helped us. Yes. Brett, 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 who was incredible. So he and Booker worked together. That's probably been a year ago.
Final dispositions, all to manage.
Yep. It is taken care of. You will never see that white cube hanging out, but I want to go.
Okay.
It is nine thirty. At this time, we have a public hearing to receive comments on the secondary catering license application for Dean LLC, also doing business as Axis and Aces, located at six seven five East North Lake Road, North Platte, Nebraska. At this time, I will open.
Okay, thanks.
The public hearing. If we have any county officials that would like to speak to the application, now is your opportunity. It would appear that there are none. Do we have any proponents in the room that would like to speak to the application?
I'm Brian Schmick, I'm one of the owners of Axis and Aces, Dean LLC.
Brian, if you'd like to come up and sign in on our roster and then just announce yourself for the record.
Brian, if you could turn on that mic by pushing that center button, thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm Brian Schmick. I'm one of the owners of Axis and Aces, Dean LLC. Our application is for a catering liquor license, amending our current license. Everything, we submitted some paperwork to the commissioners before the meeting. I think that lays out everything in there, but I can field any additional questions if anybody has any.
One question I had was involving security. And let me get to that page. Security was gonna be required, I'm assuming that's outside security when there was over a hundred guests?
Yes.
When there was outdoor space for live entertainment?
Yes.
And that security would be?
Probably would be off-duty law enforcement. My, one of my partners in this is in law enforcement, so she's got some pretty good connections as far as finding people to help with that.
No questions, further questions or concerns?
Yes, your application was very detailed. You guys did a great job in laying everything out and explaining it. I have no further questions. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Now I will open the floor to the general public. If anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns, now would be your opportunity. It would appear that there is no one from the general public that would like to speak on the matter.
With that in mind, it would be my motion that we recommend a positive recommendation.
I think we have to close the hearing first, Jerry, if you'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
No.
Very good.
Second.
We have. Joe, are you making a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
One second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Brunns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
Moving on to the next item under that topic is consider the recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission.
I would make a motion for a positive recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission regarding the application for a secondary catering license for Dean LLC, doing business as Axis and Aces, located at six seven five East North Lake Road in North Platte.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brunns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley. Williams.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
We've got to get that for the guests, which is. Well, ironically, we're like, are eighteen months into this new liquor license control thing. We're still yet to have training, and they've changed the website again, so it appears all I have to do is go in online and recommend approval. So I will do that, and I will let them know I've done that, and then if there's issues, they'll let me know.
I think the, the new process has been somewhat confusing, because I think I had three or four phone calls. I know you had phone calls from the applicant, too. So you would think they'd be rolling out some training, maybe that's.
Especially given the circumstances.
Yes, yes. Yeah, they, they have had a lot on their plate lately, I think, there, but maybe I can send a letter requesting that they give us some training.
I think, well, that's in December, they're supposed to come during Thursday, so I'm thinking we're inviting them in December.
Okay.
Give a little turnover on that board also.
Yeah, they've had some.
From the top down. This was for the mill meter, or they, they still use Midwest out there.
It is nine forty. We will now discuss and consider an application by Manning Ranch Company for Manning Ranch First Administrative Subdivision. It is located at nine nine six four South Miller School Road, located in R one, Rule of State District, on property described as Track One, Whispering Hills subdivision of the east half of Section Four, Township Twelve North, range thirty one west of the six PM in Lincoln County, Nebraska. Morning. Good morning, Judy.
Judy Clark, Lincoln County Planning Administrator. In front of you, you have the review comments, and then you should have a copy of the preliminary plat and the final plat for this subdivision. Also a location map, two location maps, actually, that show the location of this site. The subdivision will split a nineteen point four seven acre agricultural dwelling site into two separate lots. Lot one will be eleven point seven seven acres, contain the existing dwelling, and lot two will be a seven point seven oh acre lot and will be vacant. Planning staff has no objection to the subdivision. The subdivision is in conformance with the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan, zoning, and subdivision regulations. If you have any questions, I will be happy to try and answer those.
Looks like they have their own access over on the Whispering Road, then?
Yes.
For someone to develop a house, or?
Yes, lot two and lot one. Lot one's entrance would be from Miller School Road, and lot two would be Whispering. Whispering Road, Whispering Canyon?
Whispering Hills.
Whispering Hills, yeah. I think they have that labeled incorrectly. I'll get that fixed.
Would be my motion to approve Manning Ranch First Administrative Subdivision as presented by planning and zoning. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Judy.
Our next agenda item is at nine fifty.
Yeah, yeah, we get commission back.
Yeah.
But we have to pay for the service, and then we get commission back, we get an house there.
We get that.
Oh, we do.
We get a, we get a lot of commission back, and I'm not gonna tell you, we get a lot of it. We do, we get a lot of it.
Two sixteen, right. At least enough people, just like they would ask for. That's a little concerning.
So, what are these, these cards, you're about to people that know you?
No, when they, when they were just voting, just send a card, after every time they do something there. They print it on the computer. So when you get a voter ID card, we don't even use any tool, we're like, all we have is a, tell them where they go out.
When they first register or something, or move?
Yeah.
Get married, move.
Yeah. Just ask the caller there.
Because I want one of those, and you'd never stop me.
Well, it's probably better while, but you did any of that stuff, right?
I hope, God, I hope so. So I certainly understand that there is a claim here on a vet claim, and I understand that, I'm reading it. I think that should be for discussion, but.
Okay. Thank you. I haven't seen the claim yet, so I wanted to see it before we talked about it. Becky, there's two claims here for Region Two services. One's labeled coordinating.
Human services, and the other one's human two services. Two different things. One's for disability, and the other one's for drug and alcohol.
Region Two, human services, Region Two, but on the detail, it says something. Region Two Human Services, Region Two, but on the detail it says something different, oh, behavior, okay.
Yeah, but on the other one, I think it just says Region Two Services.
Yeah, those are disability and disabilities.
Okay, two different, two different groups, thank you.
It's a group, just two different divisions.
Okay. That must be your committee Joe.
Do we know who it is? I guess my question on that would be Michaela, we know who it is, why would he not be responsible for the bill?
That's my question too Joe.
Perhaps our legal counsel could weigh in on it.
Yep, I'm gonna wait until our next agenda item, cause I don't know if there's enough time to discuss before then.
We got thirty-two seconds.
That's not enough time for me, you know that. Thanks for biding your time. It is nine fifty. We will now have discuss and consider supporting National Naco and Nebraska Naco Operation Green Light for Veterans. I had this put on the agenda. It has become a tradition for Lincoln County to join supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans in the month of November. When I asked for it to be put on the agenda, Tammy went to the link and the link was not working. And so I think it got fixed late Friday afternoon. So we can just have discussion here today. I believe in years past, we have passed a resolution supporting it. I think it's great that we participate in this. Our veterans do so much for the communities, lighting up our courthouse in green for the month of November. They actually asked for it to be done November fourth through eleventh, but in years past, we have just lit it up for the entire month.
It's a good idea, as long as it takes to do it, just leave it up to it, good cause.
I agree. There's also other things in the toolkit that we can do during the month of November. Just to send a strong message to our veterans that we really appreciate the service and sacrifice. I personally know that that doesn't always end at the end of your service commitment, so. I'm gonna open the floor up for other input and discussion. Commissioner Brunns, I'm sure you have a lot to say on this topic, so, to you.
I would echo your thoughts Commissioner Woller. I think it's just, it's one of the smallest things that we can do to show appreciation. I know that in years past, we've also really encouraged other entities throughout Lincoln County to light different facilities and everything else up green. This is something that I believe Commissioner Weems brought forward several years ago when they first started this on the national level and I'm glad to see that we hopefully will continue to do so. Because there's, there's a lot of veterans out there that often don't receive the thanks, they don't feel that there's thanks in the community and just knowing that we're doing this, it's just a visual reminder to them that there are people that care about them and appreciate the sacrifices that they've made, so.
I, I have noticed with our continued support year after year of this, I see more homes with a green light on their front porch and businesses downtown. So, I, I agree, it sends a great message to our veterans that we appreciate them, so.
This is the fifth year, the fifth anniversary, but in your packets, you should have a press release and then kind of some wording for a resolution.
Thank you Tammy for including that in our packets. So, I, I feel like us passing a resolution and issuing a press release the same day that we do that would be very appropriate.
I know that this isn't a resolution for signature, but it does have the verbiage that would go into the resolution, so.
Yes, Tammy provided that off of the toolkit.
Reading this, it's...
Tammy, didn't we pass that in perpetuity the first time, that we would recognize we're gonna do it every year?
I'd have to look back and see how we did that.
I think that was the intent, when I brought it to this board, was that it was just a standing thing and we wouldn't have to reintroduce it. It's good to recognize that, that's been promoted, without a doubt. But as I recalled, we just simply said from here on, we're gonna, we're gonna recognize it in this fashion, in the original resolution.
If we didn't, we should've. Well, you know, but...
So, at any rate, recognition is very important, so.
It is important and I, I feel like us doing a resolution every year just brings it into the focus and sends a great message. I don't know that in perpetuity, if that gives us...
We didn't use that phrase, but essentially that's what it was.
Very good. So Becky, I am gonna ask that you put this back on next week's agenda with a resolution and a press release to go out. And we will formalize that Tyler. I'll share the toolkit with you for the resolution, if you wanna customize it to Lincoln County.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting that back on the agenda.
You're welcome. Tyler, while we have five minutes before our next agenda item, I did ask for a claim from Tender Hearts Veterinary Center to Lincoln County in the amount of six hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty cents to be pulled for discussion. I am familiar with this. Captain Newton had emailed me and given me a heads up that this claim would be coming through. Also, there was quite, quite a lot of conversation about the incident on social media. We do know who the animal belonged to. So, is this a bill that, that Lincoln County is responsible for? Because it's my understanding the dog was picked up by a deputy and taken to the veterinary clinic. But we know who the dog belongs to. The vet clinic was actually very familiar with the animal and even referred to the dog by name on the bill. So, just a little input from you please.
I believe I responded to your email on that totally, yeah. The owner should absolutely get the bill first.
Okay.
Ultimately, it's our responsibility to the city, because of our agreement with them on the stray animals, but yes, there's actually nothing saying we should not try to plug that out if you have animals over there, so.
But in the, in fairness to the vet clinic, this has been discussed prior and the city recognizes their portion. If it's an animal, they recognizes an owner lives in the city limits and if it's a rural owner that in order not to encumber the vet service, which they rely on heavily to take care of an animal, everybody wants an animal taken care of, which came into our possession, this has happened before. We were billed, we paid it, and absolutely, we pursue reimbursement, but if you don't honor the agreement with the city, we're not gonna get this cooperation with the vet services moving forward, so. I see both sides.
Ultimately, we're responsible for it, because of our agreement with the city, because we're ultimately responsible with the city. But I believe the owner and the shelter will be responsible back to the taxpayers.
I agree.
So your recommendation is for us to go ahead and pay this today and then your office will pursue collecting from the owner of the dog?
I, I misunderstood, I thought you said it should go to the owner first.
That's what I thought you said also.
So...
No, it needs to go to the owner, but we're responsible for the bill, we have the agreement with the city.
Yeah, this came up a couple of years ago in discussion with the city because they didn't feel that they were being treated fairly on reimbursement for vet services. Because we weren't identifying some of those animals that have been hit by a car, typically that's what's happened. And I won't speak for any other board member, but my personal opinion was I didn't want any animal to be neglected. If it was picked up in the rural areas by a deputy and we ask vet clinic to attend to the animal, that's part of, as Tyler points out, the city and county agreement with the animal shelter. But in this case, apparently the dog was in distress at the animal shelter and they...
No, it's the...
It was never taken to the animal shelter?
Well, at any rate, that's where this had come up before and in the past, from what, as I recall, the city believed that they were shouldering most of those and just wanted us to recognize that they were a rural animal. Otherwise could be established that it wasn't an animal within the city limits, that we honor our portion of the reimbursement, so.
Has the owner been approached with the bill? Is, is this, who is the bill to, it has nothing to do with the city.
No, this bill...
This is between the vet clinic and us.
This is, the bill is from Tender Hearts Veterinary Center to Lincoln County.
So it's not our city-county agreement?
Right, it's not. It's my understanding...
That's where, that's where the discussion originated Joe, that brought us to light, was the fact that our city-county...
But it was specifically for that at that time.
Yeah.
I, as long as they, my opinion is, I don't have any problem whatsoever, no, I shouldn't take that back. We took the, the dog in, I don't wanna see the animal clinic stiffed, okay, period. I do think that we should have our legal coun... please.
I was asked for a legal opinion, I gave a legal opinion, we're now having a discussion with the law on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Very good. Let's, can we pull that for next week and put it on for discussion with the, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's do that.
Very good.
Be my motion, we pull that, you know, we said we could pull for, so we'll pull that for next week.
I don't think we need...
It's not part of your previous motion, sure.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion, cause it's not on the agenda, we're just going to do it.
I mean, just specifically, we said.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you Tyler. Thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. Um, the sheriff's, the sheriff's office did.
Did they want the bill or not?
Well...
It's been euthanized.
It was euthanized, it was in bad enough shape. They put quite a bit of services into trying to save the dog and then ended up euthanizing it. I will forward the email from the sheriff's office to Tammy or Tyler and maybe they can share it with all of you, so you have the information for next week's agenda item. Or we can just put it in our packets. Okay, it is ten oh two. We are now at discuss and consider authorizing a press release to urge Lincoln County residents to support extension of the County Bridge Match Program. Jason, do you wanna come up and talk to us? Yes. You are the expert in dealing with the County Bridge Match Program.
Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. Good morning.
Good morning Jason. Actually, I'm the one that had this put on the agenda a couple of weeks ago and it got a little confusing. We had three bridge topics on one agenda, so. Yours was a little more time sensitive than this one, but Naco did send out a request asking all of the counties in Nebraska to issue a, a press release and a letter of support back to the Nebraska Department of Transportation on the County Bridge Match Program. Can you just tell us how Lincoln County benefits from that program and why it's so important for us to support it?
Well, this program has helped us replace bridges and cover some of the cost in the past, so. I guess our instance was the O'Fallon Bridge over by Sutherland. And they do cover fifty-five percent of the cost, so it's, even though it's not a full hundred percent grand or even an eighty, you know, it is, that's pretty significant, you know. Going forward, we, we do have quite a few bridges that are, I wouldn't say in poor shape, but approaching that. And yeah, this program's just a, a great program for all the counties.
So, so Jason, what, is this specifically for just county bridges, right? Not...
Correct.
Not on a secondary system or anything like that, just a county bridge?
Nope, it's for county bridges.
And that's why you O'Fallon's Bridge, for example?
Yep, so it, it, it's a huge help for those bridges that aren't on a state system or something like that, that would make them eligible for other funding as well. So, yeah, it's a great program, you can bundle together with other counties, that's been successful in the past. Ours was bundled with another county on our successful application, so, yeah, it's a great program and yeah, we'd really like to see it continue and sure help out with the cost of replacing some of these aging bridges.
And without the program, I mean fifty-five percent, in my opinion, is a very good percentage. Without that contribution from the state, the burden falls completely on the Lincoln County taxpayer
Correct.
to replace those bridges, so...
Yep, so it's a big savings for us.
Absolutely, I'm glad, I'm glad that these programs were created and I think supporting the continuation of it is, is very important. We learn over and over and over again, our voices do matter. And for me, having not just the county commissioners participate and, and support it, but also having the residents. Like you said, on the O'Fallon's Bridge, that was affecting a lot of farm to market, a lot of people traveling to work and to school and having the ability to cost share on that probably sped up the timeframe in which we could do it. And we do have a lot of aging structures in our county, so, very good. Thank you for the discussion.
You bet.
This is a discuss and consider, it's a two-part agenda item. The first one is authorizing the release of a Lincoln Ca... of a press release for Lincoln County residents to support the extension of the Bridge Match Program. Tammy has prepared the press release for us, so I would seek a motion on that item.
To make a motion, we authorize a press release for the National Naco, I don't know, for the Lincoln County residents to support the extension of the County Bridge Match Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Hughley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Brunns?
Aye.
Woller?
Aye.
Excuse me. Then the next item is discuss and consider authorizing the chair to sign a letter of support to the Nebraska Department of Transportation to express support for the County Bridge Match Program. The letters are included in your packet, if you'd like to review that.
My motion would be that we authorize the chair to sign a letter of support to the Nebraska Department of Transportation to express support of the County Bridge Match Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and if you'd like to review the letter... We have a motion and a second, and if you'd like to review the letter, uh, I believe Tammy and Deanna worked together.
I did it.
Tammy uh put specific information in the letter that applies to Lincoln County, so. I think it's important that people realize just how much is spent and how much work we do on bridges and culverts and all of those things that keep us moving up and down our county roads. So, thank you.
Tammy, was this the letter that I drafted for you or was this a different one? I think that answered that question. I'm gonna take it at, uh, thank you, Tammy, for your work. It's very well written.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Oh, any other discussion?
I was just gonna ask, has any conversation been had with our state senator? Because ultimately, it's gonna come down to appropriations uh in the legislature for this program. And this is something that we need to make sure that he understand, understands how important it is for our county, not only our county, but every county, and same within his district, so.
I think that's a great point, and maybe we could forward a copy of this letter along to Senator Jacobson. Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hugh Lee?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Bruns?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Thank you, Jason.
Good job, Tammy.
I never thought of that.
I don't think he disposes of, lets the buzzards.
Must've got, no.
The Badgers?
I'm, I'm doing along.
The Badgers? That's why you get Badgers behind him too, because of, they're going after.
It is ten ten. We now have discuss and consider forced control of black-tailed prairie dogs on property located in. Section eleven and fourteen, township sixteen north, range thirty-four west of the six P M, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
All right, this one's essentially on here, we might ask for it to be here. Uh, I talked to Perry about this a little bit this morning. I'm gonna ask the board to table this early. Um, we need to add to our legal description and modify one of the sections. Perry, the town actually extends into three different sections, so I wanna get it on the agenda. So it's appropriate to address.
Send one out.
So Becky, that'll be back on next week's agenda.
We've been editing the agenda items, sounds like.
As excited as I knew you all, we talked about prairie dogs.
Why does that include that discussion for a week? I don't know. You know, I don't know. PETA has a program, do they relocate those maybe or?
They actually do.
I was, I didn't know that.
I would, I would rather go to.
Yes, yes. I have seen that truck out of Colorado that comes with the big vacuum on it and they suck them out of the hole and they take them to Colorado and let them loose.
It's cushioned on the inside, yeah.
Yes.
What are you doing?
It's a truck, it's a vacuum truck they use to clean parking lots. It's the same thing. Yeah. So it takes.
We have, we'll have to take a hundred miles.
Yeah, they, they do get right in on a hundred and four on North Denver. Kinda like getting one of them over there, doing I seventy-six and I twenty-five. So I don't know, a hundred and four, every time they build a housing development, they have to be a mover.
Only in Colorado.
Yeah, if you go along there, all the open fields that are left.
Well.
Thousands of.
Who?
And they're big, that. I don't know what they, it's changed.
Oh, I actually do. Yes, it's obvious. Yes, you cannot see them. Why did you say that?
They are big.
Yeah, they, they look like a little puffball. Yeah, I forgot about that. Oh my gosh.
I've often wondered what the survival rate is, 'cause my nephew accidentally sucked his gerbil up in a shop vac and it didn't turn out so well, so.
Oh, darn it.
Not sure how many of those little furry rodents.
I loved it, accidentally.
It was an accident.
Uh-huh.
He was heartbroken.
I was a kid once too.
It's the prairie relocation program. That's getting to be a lucrative business.
I got the injunction. Judge Pitlo gave him until about two weeks ago to get this taken care of. Uh, I've not got any indication from Judy that he's taking care of it, and so now the board gets to vote to rip down someone's house. You didn't think I was gonna be the bad guy, did you? So where we're at in the process is, I have the injunction. Mr. Lake has not cured the problem, and so now the board gets to decide how it wants to fix it. This is everything up to, including, you, you can try to work with the individual if you want. You can put out uh forbids on demolition. It's, the board has a very wide array of options to choose from, uh, but I cannot make a choice for you.
Tyler.
Demolition of?
Uh, it would be the offending structure entirely, since there's no land use permit to go with it, so it would be the entire, the entire, we'll call it apartment, um.
Give me a try it.
Built into the quantity.
Yes, please. Tammy's gonna bring it up on uh G I S. Tyler, can you just tell us what, what kinda timeframe was he given to fix it?
Um, overall, about two and a half years, I suppose.
Yeah, 'cause this isn't a new topic in our room. This is something we've addressed.
The judge gave him approximately three months.
Okay.
Uh, under court order to get it done. And for whatever various unsundered reason, it's simply not been done, not that we've been told.
Has he communicated with us and, no, not at all?
He was at the hearing, he was present, he understood what was happening.
Okay.
Um. So we're at a point where, and maybe this is more appropriately a discussion item, but this point, while the board decides what it wants to do. Um, I somehow doubt we're gonna send the roads department down with their equipment to tear this thing down, so they'll probably have to go out for bid anyway.
They may be fine.
I would also suspect when this happens, we'll probably have to send a deputy along with whomever is doing it. Uh, I s- would strongly suspect someone having their home torn down is going to be upset.
What other actions would be needed to correct this problem other than removing that structure?
Well, he would have to get a certified septic installer to sign off on a septic system for the, for the dwelling unit that he is occupying. Um, and talking with Mr. Lake. He is essentially indicated it would have to be an above-ground unit and he simply can't afford it.
I can't get that without shutting everything down, but here's the picture.
So it was in, it was an existing quonset.
Yes.
There was a house fire apparently in the homestead, and he moved into the quonset and put in a very rudimentary.
Correct.
Like an open-air lagoon type.
That's what I understood, is it drains into an open.
It's draining just out the back.
And so it is um obviously non-compliant.
Correct.
And there are neighbors.
Complaining.
Yes.
In fairly, fairly close proximity.
Okay.
So this is a health issue.
Yes. This is one that the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality, while it was still that, had actually sent some letters to the owner at the time. Uh, wanting some information on it and hoping it was not as they had heard that it was just an open septic system. I don't believe that ever got resolved.
It sits on four point two acres.
So, it's pretty obvious to me looking at that is, the individual probably doesn't have the money, you know, looking what he, what he did too.
Yeah.
What other. Judy, city of North Platte has a program, you know, where they go buy the lots and et cetera. And I thought those were gonna, in fact, I think Mr. McNue or somebody mentioned those were supposed to be just vacant lots, but that didn't happen to be the case, did it? So is there a program or something that we can keep a gentleman in his home, or whatever he calls his home, it's his home?
Judy, if you'd like to come up, please.
You know, is there, for example, um, there's, I, I know there's a lot of social programs that help individuals. But this would be actually outlay for a septic system of two, three, four, five, six thousand dollars. I don't know what the cheapest system they could put in be. Is, is that a, a possibility? Are you aware of anything like that at all?
I could always have someone in my office do some checking on programs. I'm not aware of any. Um, the program that you're talking about that the city of North Platte has, um, it doesn't allow us to purchase a property that someone is occupying. It doesn't allow for relocation, displacement.
Okay.
So, um, that wouldn't even, you know, be an option if we could look at doing that.
Certainly, if it's in the county.
And, and, yes, it is in the county, so, um, but, um, I know they have like some services, but I don't know that there's any place in town, 'cause I'm thinking like first. Oh, what is that called? Like, um, I don't know, it's like Helping Hand or something like that, but I don't know if people have that kind of funding to go out and do something like that. I mean, those small groups, you know, they do things like painting somebody's house or something like that. I don't know that they would have the funding to do a septic.
So sixty-nine twenty-nine North Worsport would be within the two mile, wouldn't it?
It, it is barely outside the two mile.
Oh, just out of the two mile, okay, 'cause I was gonna say it would.
Yep, yep.
Any remedy would require cleaning up that mess as well from that drainage? Is that something? Is that something you're?
Guess I don't know that answer, would the remedy require cleaning?
It's been going on for almost two and a half years, so.
There's probably gonna be need for some remediation.
Remedy, yeah.
I think the larger situation that I have, and I'm not trying, and I'm not trying to sound like I'm not empathetic to somebody's potential hardship, because I don't, I just don't know the actual extent of what that financial situation looks like, but this has been an ongoing situation for two and a half years. It involved the state, it involved this, this body, it involved the courts, and there's zero communication with the property owner. And we know that they had full understanding, it's causing, it's caused a health issue for surrounding neighbors for two and a half years, and I think that frankly, we need to be pretty firm on this, so.
For me personally, I feel like he has been given adequate notification and plenty of time to respond. But with that said, I don't necessarily support going in and tearing down somebody's home. Tyler, so you, you've been representing the county and, and had plenty, so I don't know if another chance is what I'm looking for, but maybe some firmer
So.
Communication with a very firm deadline saying, if you don't rectify the problem by, and give him a tight deadline, then this is the consequence.
Yeah, but I don't think you'd go any further than the court.
Exactly.
That's, that's it, that's the end, that's beyond us, that's, that's the course, so we've, they've been there.
Good point.
So, um, is there a, how do we, you know, you have an occupancy permit, but out there, there's no such thing as an occupancy permit.
He never got a land use permit either, so, I mean, technically, the building that he built should never happen.
We would have never authorized this on that piece of land.
So the quonset wasn't already existing?
The quonset was there.
The shell.
But as far as him occupying that as a dwelling, he tried to get a, he, he put in an application, but the application was never complete because he never had a certified septic installer sign that, and so he was told multiple occasions, I think you have several letters that I sent out that said, hey, you need to finish this application, so we have never issued a permit for that structure.
Okay, so we say we've never, he's never had a certified septic installer sign it, and have you, have you seen it by any chance, or has anybody actually physically walked out and looked at it?
Uh, I've driven by, that's it, I have not actually walked onto the property.
Because do we in fact know that it is a four-inch pipe going out to a lorry on the ground and everything just going on the ground, do we know that it's up in the ground? Do we know is there a little half way septic?
At this point, it's been judicially established that it simply, it dumps out the back, I did not walk on the property. Again, Mr. Lake was in court, he had the opportunity to present any evidence that he wanted to the judge, at the end of the day, we don't have a signed land use permit. So it, it doesn't really matter what the septic situation is, if it was okay, it would have been simple to get it certified, and we'd have cleaned this up a year ago or more.
So he can, he can remain living there, right? Just, but he can't, but, so maybe he goes to the quick stop every day, four times a day to use the rest of, I'm, I'm, that's a question, I don't know. Cut it off so that no, nothing go out of the house.
Who's gonna enforce that, we don't have a building inspector, I can't walk on his property and check that.
The, the, the thing is, is I mean, this is, we have planning, zoning, rules and regulations for a reason, for the health, safety, and welfare of the general public, and this is a flagrant violation of all of that for two and a half years, and it is, it is, it's more than a nuisance, I mean, this is a health situation for his neighbors.
We just had another one that just cleared theirs up, that was a similar situation, way down south, and they had built a house, had lived there for two and a half years, probably, I don't know, maybe not that long, and they did finally get someone to install their septic, I just got that signed off on. Actually, it's still sitting on my desk, but the gentleman just signed off on that, so, I mean, it is possible, no, this is a different situation.
This is a million-dollar home, without, without a bathroom.
And they were responsive within two weeks of me having them served.
Yes.
Yeah.
And this property has a problem because of water table, is that the reason?
Well, they'd have to do a mound system, from what I understand, I'm not a septic expert, but from what I understand, they'd have to do a mound system. But I don't know that that increases the price any different than a typical regular system, but you would have to ask a septic installer at that.
Judy, it's my understanding, the homeowner can do the work themselves, and they would just need a certified septic installer to come out and inspect it and sign off that it was installed properly, is that right?
That would, that would be between the septic installer and the person, like he said, good luck, I'm not sure somebody would risk their license to do that, but, I mean, it's a possibility, I don't know.
Okay.
Tyler, can you separate demolition of the dwelling portion to the current quonset?
I believe so, yeah.
What's that?
I believe so, yes.
I guess I would be inclined to.
Henry, go ahead and come forward if you'd like to sign in and.
Oh, he's maybe been out there.
Yep, I've been there, I've got some photos there.
Yes, I don't think you'd have to dose the whole building, it would make the demolition a little bit more hands-on, but I don't think you have to dose the whole quonset, no.
Well, I would, I would say that I'd be in support of moving forward with demolition of the dwelling, if it's been installed in there, it's just obviously been shoehorned in there. I've seen a number of those on farm quonsets where they have a little shop or heated place for caving barn.
But it was never the non-compliant dwelling unit that was the base of the injunction, it was always the septic. I believe planning and zoning and I were willing to let the dwelling continue to function so long as it had a, well, a septic system.
Yeah, fix the septic.
So what if he, what if he removes the makeshift?
Home?
Well, no, just the, the, where it drains out, removes the pipe out of the building and no longer uses it and lets it drain onto the property, and he can prove that to us. Then does the building stay intact?
So he's gonna live there with no utilities, basically?
There are people that live in this community with no utilities.
Oh, I, I understand that, I understand that.
So at this point, that doesn't fix the problem of he doesn't have a signed land use permit.
Exactly.
That is the ultimate basis for the injunction, is he did not have a completed land use permit, it wasn't because the home he built was out of compliance, because the septic wasn't in compliance.
Yeah.
Henry, what, what would you like to add in the conversation?
That's, that's pretty, I just wanted to see some pictures of, of what it was like, and I'm not sure, but at one time I thought they said they were gonna take down the slant wall and build up, but that's been quite a while ago.
These are just pictures of the rest of the property?
Yeah, the last ones, or, yeah.
Sounds like, sounds like one solution is to remove the structure and build inside, go back to square one.
So did this house, did the white house burn down?
It burned down.
Okay, so instead of rebuilding?
It had two or three fires in it, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Is it still standing though?
No, it's gone.
It's gone.
It's gone.
From, I'm all about free enjoyment and use of your personal property, but again, we're going to a situation where we have these rules and regulations for a reason, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the general public, this is, this is posing a serious health issue for his surrounding neighbors, there are services out there where if he, if we take steps to remove that inner portion that was never authorized to begin with, where he can go in this community, we have a very philanthropic community, so, until the situation improves.
This is an action item on our agenda.
Tyler, what, if we, if we move to make a motion to, uh,
If you guys want to, you can add the.
Remove.
Thank you, Henry.
The, the quasi-dwelling improvement within this quonset and any remnants of the drain field that we can possibly mitigate. Is that all practical, is that doable, under the court order?
Yeah, under the court order, it is, that, again, gave us extremely broad discretion on how we want to fix the underlying issue, remove the zoning infraction. My bigger concern would become, at what I think is gonna be the cost level, this is probably something that might have to go out for bid, at the very least, it might be informal bidding. And I don't know how we're gonna get someone in there to look at it and give us a real accurate bid, again, I can't imagine Mr. Lake's gonna be real inclined to let someone into his property and figure out how much it's gonna cost to tear it down. But my suggestion would, the board would be essentially take some action to authorize removal of whatever part of the structure you feel is necessary. Probably just the internal dwelling unit, not the overall quonset, and any, uh, I hesitate to tell the board to take out contaminated soil, because I don't know that that's a zoning violation, and I don't wanna get into a point where we're paying to clean up a superfaucet.
Right.
Tyler, would we need to give some kind of notice, have the sheriff survey paper to him that says, we will be coming onto your property at such and such a time for this purpose?
Oh, yes, I would absolutely send that.
No, so that's my point.
And maybe twice, actually, one for bidders to be able to get in and provide an accurate estimate.
So the board wants to essentially vote on taking some sort of remediation action, whatever you wanna vote on, that at least gets it out in the public discourse that this is happening, so you get the benefit of other people understanding you're serious about it, and lets the landowner know, yes, this is absolutely coming, so maybe if there's a pot of money between the couch cushions, they'll understand it's serious now, I don't know, but I do think it's gotta be a secondary action to figure out what the bids are gonna be.
So what exactly was the ruling at the court hearing?
We were granted, Mr. Lake was granted ninety days to effectively remove the zoning violation that he was enjoined from continuing to have on the property, the zoning violation would be the dwelling unit that was not subject to a properly filled out and approved land use permit.
Okay, so he's in violation of the court order, then does the court order for the reaction then?
Court has given us our injunction.
Oh, okay, we've got the injunction, okay.
At whose expense is the removal?
Thank you, Jerry, I was gonna ask that.
Removal of that structure inside there, at whose expense, the owner's expense?
Ultimately, I believe we can build him for it, but if you've got a recipe to get blood out of a stone, I mean, we're tearing down a makeshift apartment built into a quonset, I can't imagine there's gonna be a lot for me to levy on, but I can certainly do what I need to do once it's taken care of.
A lien on the property?
Those, maybe, I don't know if that's authorized by statute, I might have to chase just a collections matter and get a judgment, which could ultimately result in a sale of the property, yes.
Which might be the best outcome.
Just, just to clarify, Tyler, you spoke to a pot of money in the cou- couch cushion, if that is found and he fixes it, then we're all good.
It's dirty, at this point.
He has to prove it.
Yeah.
Yes, at this point, it's the board's rights and injunction to work with, and however, however you wanna do it, that's ultimately why we're here, I can't make the decision.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
What, whatever the board does decide to do, I will probably send up an order for Judge Piccolo to review and sign, simply so that there's something in the court's files saying that the court has, this is what the plaintiff's chosen to do, the court's order, I don't think it actually makes a necessary legal difference, but it does make a very clean record, and that way the court's apprised of what's going on.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we authorize, um, putting out a bid for demolition of zoning infraction on property located at sixty-one twenty-nine North Washboard Road, North Platte, Nebraska, as authorized by the injunction provided by the courts in this matter that's been ongoing for two and a half years.
Second.
For, due to the, um, the issue of having a health, safety, and welfare issue for surrounding neighbors.
Again, second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Tyler, Judy, thank you guys for your work on this, roll call, please.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Which one do I pull?
Forty-three.
Forty-three?
Number forty-three?
Forty-three.
Oh, no, he wanted, he wanted to know which.
Oh, I'm sorry, the one that has to do with.
I don't need to, does anybody want these photos?
Fifty-five dollars, I think, on the share, on the phone system, Tyler, it's about twenty-five, and because it showed a disbursement, it should be a revenue for the phones.
Uh, while they are looking for that invoice, we have arrived at here concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives. Jason indicates he has nothing, Becky, do you have anything for us? Lincoln County Commissioner Committee reports. Just a couple of reminders. We are having the Lincoln County's Planning and Zoning one oh one meeting on, tomorrow, at City Hall. We have, it's been noticed in the paper, everyone has been invited. I've gotten some good feedback from our surrounding villages that they are planning on sending some representatives, and I think it'll be a worthwhile meeting to attend, so I would encourage that.
And for reminder for us, what time is that?
Six o'clock? It's either five thirty or six o'clock, I believe six o'clock, six, thank you, Todd. Um, I did have our Naco Board meeting last week and the legislative conference, very, very great productive conversations. Jason was able to attend the legislative conference, there were a lot of conversations about roads and different funding programs. We, the Naco Board does start up our monthly phone calls with Governor Pillen tomorrow at two o'clock in the afternoon, those have been extremely productive for the counties. Just to, uh, notice to let y'all know, we had a vacancy on the Naco Board that needed to be filled by the Panhandle District and Valerie Bell, there were three interested parties, we went through a couple of processes and tied voting to arrive at, Valerie Bell is our new vice president for Naco, she will serve the remainder of this year and move into the president position in this, uh, end of December, first of January at the Naco Annual Meeting. The salary guideline study has been completed, I brought back, they had extra copies, so rather than Lincoln County spending our taxpayer money, I brought back a copy for all of the commissioners. On next week's agenda, Becky, I would like a discussing, well, just discussion, I will be appointing a committee. Do you wanna give that one to Jerry, I only have five of them, was all they had left, Becky, but.
I already printed one.
You already printed one for you, very good. So next week I will be assembling a committee, just like we did four years ago, to make recommendations to this board on the salaries that will be set, I believe state statute indicates that they have to be set by January fifteenth of next year because it is an election year. Lots of information in the packet, some really good. Lots of information in the packet, some really good reading. Um, as far as legislative updates, we had ten carryover bills that we agreed to continue to support and then four or five additional, um, items that we are gonna support in the upcoming session. Other than that, I believe that is all I have for updates. Tyler, do we have any need for close session?
No, still gotta be revenue.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, still gotta be revenue.
Oh, hang on, Becky's checking on something.
Let me see, this is Becky, um, we actually have a question on the prodigy solutions, because we have an invoice in there that you submitted, correct, so take the service. Okay, and then we have it at the exact same amount, but not that revenue.
Thanks, Todd.
Because it's from the jail, and we actually, jail actually wrote treasurer a check. It doesn't seem to help, but we have to provide you with the service and then, basically, they deposit that money back in the treasurer's form there, jail.
Do we have any volunteers while we're waiting for mugs in the morning, tomorrow morning?
I have a meeting.
Do what?
Mugs in the morning tomorrow morning? I, I can do it.
It'll be warmer than where I will be at.
You're gonna want a windbreaker and maybe a puffy vest, I think.
What do you have going?
Girls' state golf championship that.
We're getting, we're getting a commission.
Up there on those high hills, with very little wind protection.
This is the third year, and all three years will be cold. And somebody has taken that spot, so I could be here, but I'm done tomorrow, as a scoring on a.
Yeah, but, but not the amount.
That is weird, because that's the amount, but.
I understand.
If it's, if it's the same amount, we did it for nothing, there's no gain.
It didn't cost us anything, but it's, it's revenue neutral.
We, we, that's, that is not the case with our prodigy phone system, that's why we put it in.
We make some money off of it.
Yes, that's a tremendous amount of money.
Right.
Like that much, how much does it cost us to have that?
Yeah, that's what we're trying to find out, but surely does it cost when it's listed on the revenue side?
Can I put you on speakerphone, can you explain the prodigy? Because there's an invoice in there for the actual contract, which we're paying for, and then for revenue, there's gotta be a check.
It always surprises me how much we make in revenue off of phones over there.
Is Penny there?
Because we're not, you know, since.
Did, did, did fees go up or something that we weren't?
He told us, it was, it's a huge commission.
I know it.
Yes.
I can't, I can't.
We, I mean, we were making, we were making almost a million dollars off of commissary loans.
He reported that in his, in his coverage too.
You, you actually have an invoice to prodigy every month, correct?
We're just trying to see what the spread is, we just wanna know what the spread is. Between the cost and the reclaim, reclamation.
Because we do have a contract, a written contract with the prodigy.
Yes.
Yeah.
And agreed upon percentage.
Is it something that we just need to pull the claim and?
I, I think it's, honestly, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's probably legit, but we, we asked the sheriff about that a couple, three years ago and he gave us a rudimentary breakdown on revenues.
Like a million dollars for commissary and phones.
For commissary and phones together, it, it really added up.
But, um, the thing is, you know, that our phone, the, the deal was so high that the state of Nebraska stepped in about four or five years ago and said, that's not fair, you can't charge that much, so that we started charging the less, but it's still way more, it's like we charged two thirty-five a minute or something.
Which is silly, because they're in, they're in jail, like, it's not social hours, so we should be able to charge what's wrong.
All I'm saying is even though it clearly says this calls from the court, people in jail very often say things they would probably be advised by their word, not saying.
Yep, and it's been used.
Yeah, all the time.
I have time.
They're not in there because they have the brightest.
The check is traumatic to the treasurer, so let's just pull the claim, we pay it every month, but let's just pull the claim and then you can have Marla or whoever knows what they're doing with this call.
Yep, but it could be next week or whatever.
Next week, two weeks, I guess.
We should get a rundown on where we're at.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yep, I think you, bye.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Becky.
And how do you think how that system works, but we do it every month, we pay prodigy every month.
Yeah, and we also get.
Very good, thank you.
Where is the claim, though, I need the actual claim.
I sent it, Joe, you had it.
I did, I brought it down here, I think you have it, Becky.
No, this is the other one, that one's on the bed.
Well, I did take it from Jerry. I took the claim.
First one said seventy-one, I think.
I'll link you, this is, well, no, that's not it. But maybe I flipped it over, no, I don't know.
I was thinking, you said, let me see that, what number is it, seventy-one prodigy.
Okay, well, I'll.
Well, I don't know, we need to pull it, because I think it's.
What is it, the Kent, and the Kent was, you were looking at it.
I didn't.
Oh, yeah, let, blame Kent.
Yeah, blame me.
It's right there, I see it.
Yeah, Kent put it, oh, Kent put it back in there.
I put it, I buried it.
He buried it in my pile.
I, honestly, I think it should be paid, but.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
I think we should just pay it, but.
Yes, I agree.
But just get it clarified so that we understand that.
It's paid, it's signed.
There's no point, there's no point holding it up.
But, but.
We appreciate your professional.
But is our income exactly the same amount as what we pay per month?
Can't be.
To the penny.
Because it's gonna vary per month.
To the penny.
But it could be, because they, we might get, if they use the system, then they, they're, they're, the inmates themselves are paying for it, so whatever, I mean, it could be, you know what I'm saying? If they used it, then they, then they get that money from the commissary, from the inmates' commissary, and they pay that to the treasurer.
But you know, the thing, yeah, the, the phone system was supposed to be kept separate because we bill per minute, that's how it's billed. And that's how we charge, so if they have a certain number of minutes, they might have two thousand this month, twenty-five hundred this month, six thousand this month.
And, and this is. This is just the line for the jail telephone commission, that's, that's it, that's the only thing in that line item. There's other commissary stuff, but that's not included in that.
Okay, so.
So they, we'll, we'll have them explain it, but.
Where are the claims down here? I'll put it back in.
Okay, so put it back in, okay, and I'll just have Marla explain it when she gets back, make up, please.
Thank you. Have all questions been addressed?
One way or another.
Tammy has a reminder.
I think they're just saying, let's, it's pretty good, we just sit down, let's get the meeting over.
Uh, West Central Department.
Well, that's interesting, there's another seventy in there.
We'll be here between eight and ten thirty tomorrow.
Can't have two seventies.
There's two sixty-nines and two seventies.
I don't think anybody.
I know, yeah. Tammy has an announcement that she would like to.
They're different.
Announce. West Central Health will be in.
We'll be here tomorrow, eight to ten thirty, to do flu shots.
Very good, bring, bring your insurance card.
Bring your insurance card. And we have an inland court meeting at that time.
Very good. With that, if no one has anything else for the good of the county, I will dismiss this at ten fifty-seven.